Okay, good morning, everyone. It is 8:30 and I will bring the council meeting of December the 10th to order. We have an agenda before us. There are a couple additions I would like to add. 8.11, Drumheller Solid Waste, and in the closed session portion, Intergovernmental Affairs, and I think that's Section 21, but we'll find out what section that is. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Counselor Christie?
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Motion's been made to move the agenda as amended. All those in favor? That is carried. We've pre-circulated the council minutes of November 26th. Are there any errors or omissions? Counselor King?
I'd move the minutes from... I'd make a motion to move the minutes from the November 26th regular council meeting as presented.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made to adopt the minutes as presented. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. We will move on to 5.3.1, Quality Management Plan. Welcome, Ms. Hazelton.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and members of council. So, we're bringing the Quality Management Plan for Safety Codes to you. We got our Safety Codes accreditation back in January of 2002, and that allows us to administer all the Safety Codes, gas, plumbing, electric, building. We don't sign off on building or private sewage that gets signed off, but we do sign off on the others. Being accredited requires a Quality Management Plan which is reviewed regularly. This QMP defines the acceptable level of service that the accredited agency is required to provide. The Safety Codes Council provides a template that can be used by accredited members to update their QMP, and that's what we currently use. This has recently been revised and we modified it to suit our municipality. The standard is a benchmark for any required audits, which we just went through, a full service audit. Typically, they'll pick one discipline, but this last year, we were audited on all the disciplines. So, this change is really a result of some of that audit. And so, the only difference that you will see is under the Private Sewage and Disposal System site inspections, we have added a line that says if no visual inspection is completed prior to covering, the Safety Code officer will note the inspection report why a visual inspection was not conducted, and the file will be closed non-compliant. And then, any photos will be attached to the file. It's very problematic sometimes for the Safety Code officer to get there while the machinery's on-site and they're ready to cover. And so, that has been a challenge and one of the pieces that required a bit of a change in how we word things as per the audit. It should also be noted that the fire discipline is not included in the QMP. They have their own QMP, so that comes back to you at a different time. So, our recommended motion is that council move to accept the proposed Quality Management Plan for Safety Codes. And then, just to make you aware, our current contract will be up at the end of May with Superior Safety Codes, so it'll go out for a request for proposal. We're hoping probably the end of January to get that request for proposal out. So, just to make you aware of that.
Does council have any questions? Counselor King?
Just a question regarding the sewage and the non-compliance. So, how does that impact the individual who, well, he has the contractor there, gets his sewage system installed and then covered because the inspector can't get there, and then he's classified as non-compliant? So, what's the outcome for them going forward into the future?
It stays that way on the record, so typically with a sale, that might be a question that comes up, or with bank financing, things like that. We are working to try to ensure that the inspector is notified a little bit sooner, but they have several municipalities that they're dealing with, and as you know, it's a long distance to get across even from the north to the south. So, typically, it's there here a couple days a week, so to get stuff scheduled ahead of time. So, we're trying to work with them to facilitate that we don't have a lot of this happening. But yeah, it stays on the record as non-compliant because they couldn't see it. So, it may pop out in other ways, sales, property, that kind of thing. Well, I just wondered...
Just yell.
No. So, the impact could be, it could affect the sale of a property. It could. Like typically, when it's after the fact, like they're more worried about compliance with regards to setbacks, is the system meeting setbacks of property lines and those types of things. But sometimes if insurance or the bank financing a new system, that might be a challenge for somebody. I was just gonna bring up another point. And just because it's closed as non-compliant doesn't mean they aren't technically compliant. Like, they do have to have a certified person putting them in, so that, it is what it is. It's just logistics for being in a rural municipality, and we're not the only one to deal with this. So, a lot of the municipalities that are rural have put that clause in because that way, they're not open or they're not, they're not left open because no inspection was done, and they're required to do an inspection before cover-up in our current QMP, and that was the piece that wasn't being met. And so, we've included that clause that if they're not there, they'll still inspect after the fact, but they'll be closed non-compliant. And so we've included that clause that if they're not there, they'll still inspect after the fact, but they'll be closed noncompliant.
Counselor Christie, would there be any consideration for extensive pictures and stuff before it's covered or would they consider that?
Well, and that's what we're asking for that as well. So at least we have some record. But as far as the auditors for Safety Codes were concerned, that was not a sign-off. Like that didn't resolve the issue of it being inspected.
There any other questions for the planner? What's council's wishes? Counselor King.
I would move that council accept the proposed Quality Management Plan for Safety Codes.
Thank you. Motion's been made to accept. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. We will now move on to five point three point two, Municipal Planning Commission.
Perfect.
Anytime you're ready.
Okay, so we are here to have you move to cancel the December nineteenth Municipal Planning Commission meeting. We did chat about this at the last MPC meeting. Only one application was received to be considered by the commission for this December date. The applicant has agreed to move their application forward to the January thirtieth meeting and we're already past the deadline to consider anything else. So that's not an issue. And again, council is the one that approves the meeting dates and so you have to agree to cancel by motion.
Okay, there won't be any issues meeting time deadlines with canceling this?
No, we'll get an extension. They're fine.
Very good. What's council's wishes? Counselor McGee.
I move that we cancel December nineteen, two thousand and nineteen Municipal Planning Commission meeting.
Motion's been made to cancel the meeting as per recommendation. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Just booting right along here. Next item on the agenda is five point four point one, Egg Service Board Stampede Farm Family Award. Welcome, Bowen. You're looking dapper as heck. Thought I'd mention it because you can't see on camera. And anytime you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council. So this is the, as mentioned, the two thousand and twenty BMO Stampede Farm Family Award. And this is, the recommended motion is that council nominates the Benedict Farm Family, Alex and Sharon, and Derek and Lois family to receive the two thousand and twenty BMO Calgary Stampede Farm Family Award as recommended by the Egg Service Board. And also that council approve attendance to the award presentation event for whichever delegate they designate as a county representative. So a little background. This, they've kept everything similar to previous years for eligibility. The award is given out each year to recognize those families that ensure agriculture, the agricultural industry and their respective rural communities continue to thrive. It recognizes those families in those areas that are active in primary agriculture. They still live on the farm and get their main source of income from that as well as being thoroughly involved in the community. At the November eighteenth Egg Service Board meeting, the board made the motion to recommend to council that the Benedict Farm Family, as mentioned above, be nominated for this award. And then there's a list of past recipients of the award. And the only cost would be just a per diem for the council representative to attend. And then it would be put in our newsletter and they do a write-up and a lot of stuff for it. But is there any questions?
What's council's wishes? Counselor Christie.
I'll make the motion to nominate the Benedict Family, Alex, Sharon, and Derek and Lois to receive the two thousand and twenty BMO Calgary Stampede Farm Family Award as recommended by the Egg Service Board.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Counselor King.
I'd make the motion that we approve the attendance of Counselor Christie as our representative at the award presentation.
Are you willing?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made to allow, approve attendance for Counselor Christie. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and council.
Okay, we will now move on to six point one, two thousand and twenty interim budget. You're taking this one, Bill?
Yes, through the Reeve. Touch this, the report dealing with the approval of the two thousand and twenty interim budget. As council is aware, if the council of the day doesn't approve the budget prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, which is January first, it's requirement under the MJ to pass an interim budget. That is before you today. In addition to that, relating to the capital program, there are a few items that require either tendering or setting of specifications and the like. So it's prudent to approve some of these to allow for better prices to proceed and timely delivery of specifically the operating equipment in the year. So administration is asking for prior approval for numerous pieces of operational equipment that were, have been included in the, excuse me, two twenty capital approval. In addition, there's one technical housekeeping amendment dealing with an item that came out of the committee of the whole, dealing with the disposition of the urban sustainability reserve. Again, that reserve has met its purpose and it does have an existing balance and the recommendation was, the direction from committee whole was to transfer that to the gravel reserve. So there is a specific recommendation because all transfers in and out of reserves require resolutions of council. So that's before council today in this report. Other than that, that concludes the presentation on the report.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Are there any questions? Is anyone prepared to make any motions? Counselor Penner.
I'd make the motion that council approve the two thousand and twenty interim operating budget as detailed in appendix one.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made to approve the two thousand and twenty interim budget. Operating budget. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that was carried unanimously. Counselor McGee.
I move that we approve the two thousand and twenty capital expenditures and prior approvals and funding sources as detailed in appendix two.
Thank you. Motion's been made for council to approve the two thousand and twenty capital expenditures. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Counselor King.
So I'd make the motion that we close the urban sustainability reserve and that the balance of one million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars be transferred to the gravel reserve.
Thank you. Motion's been made to close the sustainability, to shift the sustainability reserve. Is there any discussion to that motion? Don't see any, so I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. We will now go to six point two, tax sale, public auction results. Mr. McKinnon? Oh, sorry.
Actually, I'm gonna do it.
I keep looking at the name and I, yeah, I, sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine. I think we had planned it for the last one, but, and I was away and then it didn't work out.
Oh, so you're gonna pay for it this time, are you?
Yeah, exactly. So good morning, council. There's four separate recommended motions here. I won't read them all. You've got them in front of you. Just some background, on Monday, October twenty-eighth at two P M., the annual tax sale public auction was held. There were four properties on the list and there were no bids on any of the properties and we had one observer attend. Council approves sale of properties policy number sixteen sixteen on December sixteen, two thousand and fourteen, which indicates that all properties not sold will be brought to council for decision on municipal acquisition. Section four twenty-four two of the Municipal Government Act states that if the municipality wishes to become the owner of the parcel of land and must request the registrar to cancel the existing certificate of title for the parcel of land and issue a certificate of title in the name of the municipality. Administration recommends the following two properties be transferred to the county to be dealt with internally. Row three one two six one four four three zero zero zero, plan O T at township thirty-one, range twenty-six, west of the fourth, containing two point two four acres, which was the old road allowance. Row three two two three two zero four three zero zero zero, which was a portion of the northeast of twenty thirty-two, twenty-three, west of the four, which is one acre, which is the Finn Hall site. And administration recommends the county list the property detailed below with local real estate with the intention to sell. Any offers below the reserve bid of two hundred and fifty thousand would be brought to council for approval. If at any time the tax arrears are paid on this property prior to any approved sale, the property would revert back to the owner. Any costs associated with this process or sale would be added to the tax roll. There's no cost to the county for this. And that one is the acreage of eleven point six one acres of plan zero zero two four eight six one, lot one. And the following property, we have one that has an offer that was made after the tax sale date. And this is the vacant parcel in Sunny Slope. The offer of eight hundred dollars is below the reserve bid, but does cover the tax arrears and administration fee that is currently owing on the property. The offer is made by a party that was intended to receive this parcel in nineteen ninety-two, but a transfer of land was never registered. These purchasers had paid the taxes from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and fifteen. When I realized the property actually wasn't in their name, amended the tax roll to the actual title, then we went into this process. So like I said, there's four separate motions there, one for each of the parcels.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Severson? Counselor Keever.
We take control of land and we get it for the dollar. If somebody comes along in the future and wants to pay for it, does it go back to the old reserve bid?
No, with this, these two motions that you're wanting to purchase it for a dollar, that then negates that process. So it would go right into Neehill County's name. Otherwise, it would be, the other, the acreage goes into Neehill County as tax forfeiture. Then it still can be, tax arrears can still be paid and revert back. The two that we want to purchase for a dollar would then just be transferred right to Neehill County. We take title. There's no recourse for any previous owner. And those are the two properties that are in the name of people that are deceased at this time. So even if someone came in and paid the tax arrears, the only way it can do is, would revert back to the deceased owner's name. So it doesn't do anybody any good.
Are there any other questions? What's, what's council's wishes here? Counselor McGee.
I'd like to make the motion to authorize the purchase of plan zero O two at township thirty-one, range twenty-six, west of the four. Row three one two six one four four three zero 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 for one dollar by our county.
Okay, motion's been made as presented. Are there any, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Counselor Penner.
I'd make a motion that council authorize the purchase of the northeast of twenty thirty-two, twenty-three, west of four. Row number three two two three two zero four three triple zero for a dollar by the county.
Okay. Motion's been made to authorize the purchase. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Counselor King.
So then I'd make the motion that council direct administration to sell plan zero zero one two four eight six one, lot one, containing eleven point six one acres. Row three five two four zero five two three triple zero as per the sale of properties policy sixteen dash sixteen.
Thank you. Motion's been made to sell. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Counselor Keever.
I move we accept the offer of eight hundred dollars for the lot in Sunny Slope.
Okay, motion's been made to accept the sale as presented on our recommended motion here. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Okay. We will now move on to six point three, designated mobile homes public auction. Welcome back, Carolyn. Oh, wait a minute, you never left.
Thank you, Reeve Whitstock. I'm bringing forward the public auction for the designated mobile homes. I have two separate recommended motions again to set the date and then to also set reserve bids so I don't have to come back again before then. Background, the Municipal Government Act states in section four three six point zero two sub two that the municipality must offer for sale at a public auction any designated manufactured homes shown on its tax arrears list and it must be held between March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, when the notice was sent to the owner, and ending on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. As the tax recovery regulations for designated manufactured homes are slightly different than the regular tax sale, it was convenient to do this at a different time. Advertising requirements are only for a local newspaper and not required in the Alberta Gazette. We currently have two mobile homes that reside in the Torrington Mobile Home Park on the tax arrears list. The county assessor has provided an opinion of value for the two mobiles and this has been used to set the reserve bids. The owners have been notified of the tax arrears several times and the actions that will be taken by the county if they are not paid. The mobile home park owner is aware of the issues currently arising.
The mobile home park owner is aware of the issues currently arising, and has been notified that neither of the mobiles may be removed, dismantled, or changed in any way during this process. There'll be some advertising expense, and follow-up, we'll be doing the advertising and then notification again, and hopefully collection before February 3rd, but...
Okay, thank you. Are there any, any questions for Ms. Severson? Counselor Christie.
Do we know the age of those mobile homes?
They're very old. Very, very old. And they're not in the best of shape. It's, I didn't want to go there with this, but I don't have a choice. And they're both have people in them. So that's the other issue that, hopefully, we don't have to get to this point, but we have to nudge them along a little bit. The one is a senior. I have talked to, I've tried to talk to him. I have spoken to the manager and the owner of the park, given them, given them the documentation for the senior deferral tax program that the government provides. It's up to them to apply for it. That would cover this and future taxes, but I'm not sure if he's done it. I haven't received a check anyway, still.
Are there any other questions? What are council's wishes? Counselor King.
So I'd make the motion that we take the recommendation from administration that the tax sale date for the designated mobile homes with tax arrears, as defined in Section 3261C of the Municipal Government Act, be set for Monday, February 3rd, 2020, at 11:00 AM.
Thank you. Motion's been made as printed. Is there any, any discussion to that motion? It's kind of unfortunate that we got to this point, but that's where we're at. Okay, if there's no discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Does someone care to make a motion to set the reserve bid?
Question first.
Okay.
These mobile homes, the reserve bid is quite low, I see that. However, are they even within guidelines of how old a property is allowed to be? And if it's older than 35 years, is it?
They're on sale. Are they grandfathered in, though? I, I'm gonna let Barb answer this question.
I'm worried about if they're sale, if they're sold, are they grandfathered?
If they are sold, they can't be moved into Neale County. If they stay where they are, then they're grandfathered. But that's going to be a challenge. Or it has to be a condition of a sale, that they know, and most of the places around us are stricter than we are on those rules. So, I guess homework needs to be done there, for that, for purchaser.
Should we add that as a condition in this motion?
Are there any other questions?
What are council's wishes here?
So I'll just add to that, that we'll make sure when we do the sale that they are aware of the conditions, that if they were to purchase it, asked to stay in the park, or moved out of the county.
So the value now is by assessors, or has been assessed at that value?
Just from the assessors. I didn't want to put any money into actually getting an appraisal done, because the amount owing is not a huge amount, and it just keeps adding up the costs. So, this is based on what Troy has said, is what his assessed value. He is going to be inspecting again, but that's where we sit right now.
Another follow-up question. If bids come in lower than that, it would come back to council at that point?
We cannot accept any bids lower than the reserve bid at the auction, but if we get an offer afterwards, because they didn't sell, then that would come back to council. Absolutely.
I move that pursuant to the Municipal Government Act, Part 10, Division 8.1, council sets the reserve bids for the designated mobile homes that will go to public auction as follows. Roll 33260314500 to be, to be $16,500. And Roll 33260313700 to be $8,500, with the conditions as listed.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made as on the screen. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is 8.1, human resources policy. Welcome, Ms. Kasha.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council members. Today I have for you the HR policy. So I've got a handful of changes, adjustments, that we're going to be looking at, and I'll go point by point, and if you've got questions, please let me know. The first item for discussion is 2.19. That is on page 99 of your package. We have clarified what permanent employee means. We have two current employees who fall under the permanent employee that is part-time. So what we wanted to do was just verify that they are included in our part, in our permanent staff, and they would then be included in future benefits. Item 2.20 speaks to the same thing. What we did is we lowered the weekly hours required to be included in those benefits from 25 hours to 22 and a half. And that is what brings those two employees into the benefits package, and it includes a variety of different benefits. Of course.
So, that part-time employees benefit package, different than a full-time employee? Like, similar, or?
They would, at this time, if this change goes through, they would receive the same benefits, other than they wouldn't be part of the pension plan. So they would receive healthcare, dental, they would receive personal days, they would receive access to the other benefits. Both of the employees in question have been with the county for several years. Item 3.37 is on page 107. There was a gap in our whistleblower policy, so to address that, what we did is we created this one here, which states that should there be any complaints regarding the CAO, that they could be brought to myself or to the Reeve directly.
I'll keep that in mind.
We can meet later. The next item is 11.7. This refers to employees who are terminated for just cause through the county. They, they would not be eligible for a sick time payout. Currently, we bank quite a bit of our sick bank, sick time, and when employees leave, they do get payout based on percentages, and how long they've been here. When you're terminated for just cause, what we're suggesting is that you wouldn't benefit The next item is 14.5, page 116. 14.5 is the added overtime banking program. With the changes in the provincial government, we've been able to reconsider the banked overtime process for our staff. We're allowed to bank it now at one-for-one. Previously, up till September 1st, it was one and a half, and there wasn't really the benefit for the county. Now there is a stronger benefit for it, and there is some cost savings that we could be utilizing through taking time off with pay rather than the overtime. And so it is laid out, and there, there's several points in there. Item 14.17 is page 117. This is an added program called the Flex Time. It is, under Alberta standards, it's called averaging agreements. Our staff are more familiar with the Flex Time program, that's why we named it that. And what it does is it allows us to allow for staff to have a few hours off if they wanted to attend something for their family, something that's not already covered under the medical coverage, medical leave, sick leave, Christmas concerts, and what have you. Cable guy is showing up, getting some flexibility in there. What that would do is allow them to increase their work hours that is not overtime, increase their work hours over a set schedule, and allow that to bank. Now, we did set a max on that one. So there's a max of 40 hours per year that they can get. It is not a rolling max, it is a one-time maximum. And it allows a little bit more balance with that work-life, a healthy balance.
CAO, Mike.
The, just to, to follow up on that point, for, just for added clarity, is the Flex Time program is not, is not a freebie for extra days or hours or stuff like that. That's the employee working additional time to have that flexibility later on. So it's not a, it's not a give of extra days off or anything like that. The time they've taken off, they will have had to work previously. And that's part of the clarity of that, of that program. And under labor codes, if we do have to, if we do have to pay that out, part of the agreement is that we don't pay it out at overtime rates. So it's not like somebody can work extra that isn't, say, legitimate overtime, and then get paid out at overtime rates. That's not part of how that works. So that, it does go, get paid out at straight time, and they have to put the hours in before they're able to, to take them off. So it's, it's just a trade.
Counselor King.
So, we have this banking of overtime hours.
That's correct.
And we have Flex Time.
Yes.
So are employees allowed to use both of those programs?
They are...
Because they sound to me like they serve similar purposes.
They do. Not all staff have the ability to work overtime. A lot of jobs don't require it.
Right.
So this allows them, but all staff are available to use both if they wish. But there's some gapping where there are some staff that just simply don't qualify for overtime, their jobs just don't require it.
Okay, so operational staff, more often than not, are going to get overtime and...
And they can use, they can utilize the Flex Time if they wish as well.
So they could do both?
They could do both, yeah.
So, if they didn't enter into an overtime agreement, they could use the Flex Time agreement to utilize those hours?
Yeah, they could use both if they wish, and the overtime they're allowed to use throughout the year, so they can continuously bank up to 40 hours if that's, the work allows for it. For the Flex Time, what would have to happen is they have to have a skit, a set schedule. So that's not overtime, that's work that would just be generally required. So they would expand their workday by an hour or two to get regular work done, and then that would be banked at the regular. And the benefit would be staff, when you take overtime, banked overtime off, it is taken at one-for-one, just like Flex Time. But if you go to pay it out, pay out, banked overtime is paid out at one and a half, Flex Time is paid out at one.
And I assume then that if an employee's entering into any of these kind of agreements, it's with their supervisors?
That is correct.
If I, if I may, Mr. Reeve, again, to, to that point, is any time that there's overtime or Flex Time, that has to be approved by the supervisor? So it's not, it's not the, it's not the right of the employee to just arbitrarily decide themselves that they're going to work overtime, or that they're going to work extra time to put into their flank, or into their Flex Time? That has to be approved ahead of time by their, by their supervisor, and that's all, all by protocol and policy.
Counselor Penner.
Just one more question, Jesse.
Yes.
On 14.23, participation in the program requires a signed agreement. Is that, you do that at the beginning of the year, or it's just when the time, when they need to take that time?
The agreement is in place for up to two years. We would likely do it on an annual basis, depending on how often. And it is with a set schedule, as Mike had said. It is all done in advance. You can't just say, oh, tomorrow I'm going to do this. It has to be in a set schedule, that's what employment standards requires, and it has to, you have to have the work to do so.
I just wanted to comment that as someone who was able to utilize such a program in past employment, it was, for me, one of the best benefit packages for healthy living that I could see. So I, I strongly agree with this, the suggestion.
Next point. Item 16.4 is on page 119. Oh, I missed one, sorry. The, there's a change in the manager time off. With managers and supervisors, we had allowed them to take, because they don't qualify for overtime, any hours that they did earn was captured within their regular wage. So what we did is we clarified that managers and directors, CAO, could have manager time, which is the 10 days per year, 10 or 15 days per year off, time off without, with pay. What we did is we took the supervisors out of that, and allowed them to earn their overtime, and then that they could be, they could participate in their banked overtime, which then still allows them to get their, up to 10 days or what have you. So they could still participate in that. So all supervisors, one and twos, now are eligible for overtime. If they work the overtime, work requires it, they can now get paid that overtime, or they can bank it as well. Now item 16.4. 16.4 is in regards to wage and salary. We used to go with the COLA set for September CPI for several years, the better part of, I'm guessing about 10 years or so. We would like to do a market adjustment analysis, which was what we completed in the fall. We would like to bring that information forward, and every few years, we would bring that back, that information, and that would make sure that we are consistent and competitive within our surrounding communities, and that our staff are fairly paid and compensated. So we'd remove the COLA as being a marker, and we'd be able to use the market analysis or internal equity, so we can do external, or we could do internal. Next point is 18.3. That's page 121. When the government made some changes to their employment policies for September 1st, one of the changes was they reverted back to a previous policy in regards to stat pay. one of the changes was they reverted back to a previous policy in regards to stat pay. So, we reverted back to what their previous standard were, which is the five of nine. So, if you work a Monday, if you've worked the last five of the nine Mondays, then it's part of your regular schedule, rather than just paying for all of your stats. This only comes into play for our seasonal staff, our casual employees. So, that's what that update is. The next item is 33.7, page 145. This is in regards to bring your own device, your own cellphone, to the program. We had brought to counsel in August of this past year that we were going to be looking at a program. This is the result of that. What we're suggesting is that if an employee with consultation with their director, with their manager, wishes to bring in their personal cellphone rather than a county-supplied cellphone, that we would provide them with a reimbursable expense of $50 per month. We would pay it quarterly in advance. We would then be able to share that number publicly, should we determine that there's a business reason for it. And then, they wouldn't have to carry two cellphones around if they're carrying a personal phone and the county phone, and there is a savings to the county in that process. No questions. The very last one was just the removal of Appendix A, which, in fact, was the history of the COLA.
Counsel, have any questions for Ms. Kasha? Or the CAO, or anyone else? Counselor McGee.
I move that we approve the attached human resource policy with the recommended changes.
Thank you. Got a motion to move the attached as presented. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counselor Keever.
I just have one question on the cellphone one. How far down the ladder do we pay for a cellphone?
It would be at the discretion of the manager, so it would have to be required by a job, and anybody who currently has a cellphone would be considered. So, I don't currently have a county cellphone, so it wouldn't apply to me. So, we wouldn't just all of a sudden start paying employees who don't currently have cellphones.
Is there any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to 8.2, council attendance at FCM. You taking this, Jim?
I am, but I think Glenn's asking for a coffee break. Oh, okay. Reason I'm bringing this forward is FCM is an annual convention attended by representatives from municipalities across Canada. The conference location changes annually and moves around the country. In 2019, there were 2,087 delegates, of which 473 were from Alberta. The convention is intended to offer training sessions, networking opportunities, and to determine lobby initiatives. The past year, the leaders of four of the major parties, Conservative, Liberal, NDP, and Greens spoke. But as you can see in the table provided, where it's going to be, and the cost of us attending the convention in 2018 was $40,000, 2019 was $25,000. We have received a grant for $50,000. What I'm asking is for discussion is possibly to limit our, to vote or to put our names in a hat who wants to go to this, because we should have, the council has to lead, and sending all of us down there, where we've spent more than the grant we've got from the FCM, from the MAMP funding. I'd just like some discussion on this, on where council's feelings are on sending all of us, or putting our names in a hat on who wants to attend this, and pulling one member out to send.
Counsel, have any questions?
I don't necessarily have any questions, but just for clarification, I think, yes, it's very valuable, networking, and I definitely think our Reeve should be there, plus a few councillors. It shouldn't just be one person representing us, because it is very, very valuable, just the interaction, the networking, some of the speakers, give and take, but just my opinion.
Counselor Keever.
They kind of buggered up a simple solution of deciding who's going to go when they switch to a four-year term for elected officials. I know a lot of counties used to, I mean, it was the Reeve and two councillors, and they were named right off the top, so that you knew exactly who was going to which one. I don't know how we'd work that out now with a four-year term, so that everybody got an equal shot at it.
Counselor McGee.
I personally believe that if a councillor would like to go, they should get to go. I personally believe that I am much better equipped to do the job that I do here for our residents. I am better equipped for the big picture, and am better, more aware of the factors that are influencing how things come down the line to us. I think it'd be very sad that if a person has an interest to be part of that process so that they can do their job better, would be confined from not being able to do it. I think it's money well spent, myself.
Counselor Keever.
I guess I find it kind of funny that when FCM is in our own home province, there seem to be very few of the local politicians at it. So, I mean, it gives a real bad look with that type of a performance.
Counselor King.
I guess I'll comment on this issue as well. My feeling has been, since I became a councillor, that not only FCM, but the other conferences we attend through RMA and other organizations that we're part of, have, for me as a councillor, been very beneficial. So, I would reflect Deputy Reeve McGee's comments. Personally, I believe that as a councillor, the interaction with other councillors, both provincially and on a national scale, can benefit us right here at home. And I know I've had conversations, both at FCM and RMA and other places, with councillors, that you get ideas, you get information, you get a bigger picture of what's going on. So, I think I personally would be in agreement that if a councillor's interested in attending one of these conferences and sees value in being there for themselves, that as a council, I think we ought to support that. I would be, the opportunity to hear from others in different locations, and to hear what else is going on in other parts of the country, as well as our own province, is extremely valuable to us as councillors. And if a councillor would like to go, I think we ought to be supporting that as part of the professional development that's required for someone doing this kind of a job. It's required in any other area of your life and employment. For myself, as an independent businessman and a professional agrologist, it's a mandatory thing that I'm engaged in. And for my business, it's probably costing us, with the three employees I have now, probably somewhere in the $15,000 to $20,000 a year. But it's a requirement, it's something that's needed to stay current and up to date. So, I'd have a hard time saying to any one of our councillors who had an interest in going that you shouldn't go, or couldn't go.
Counselor McGee.
In addition to that, we are members of RMA, who just passed a resolution at our last conference to use our collective strength to help the rural perspective to be understood at FCM. When we are in the extremely trial time financially because of Alberta concerns that are affecting our county solely, I think the numbers that we show behind RMA with this resolution is also very critical to the economic future of Alberta and of Neale County.
Counselor Christie.
I guess one of my thoughts is that we're somewhat nonpartisan, so when we go to the federal conventions, we can talk to any of the parties that are there. I find it very valuable just listening to the different parts of Canada, and we are part of Canada, and I think that interaction is very important.
Okay, I haven't weighed in yet, so I will now. I think our job as councillors is to be informed. Part of being informed is attending conferences where you do actually get the heads-up. You get what's coming at you, what could possibly be coming at you. If we don't attend, well, I guess it's the old story, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. As the numbers show, there are well over 20% of the delegates are coming from Alberta. And when you have that kind of attendance at a conference, especially a national conference, there is opportunity there to change policy. And the FCM is looking at Alberta as, how can we make your participation in this conference more valuable? And you know, as much as we say we're there to learn, we're there to network, we're there to share our knowledge with those that are also there. It's not often, well, basically, that's about the only time, that we actually have any sort of interaction with the urban counterparts, because they are the ones that are there too. And there's lots of times where maybe it's the first time we've ever met one of our urban delegates from even within our own zone here. And I think it's very important that we have that ability to interact. Now, as far as who should go, I think you get out of it what you put into it. And I think everyone that's been there has been wanting to be there, wanting to be participating in it, and wanting to show that, yes, we're from Neale County, and yes, we want to be part of this conference, and we want to share our knowledge and to learn from other municipalities. It's the discussion amongst the delegates that's important for our regional issues. And, I mean, I've met, and this is a while ago, but I actually met a councillor from Pinoc, town of Pinoc, and I won't share his name, because I know we're being recorded. But he happened to be on the board of Alberta Trailnet. And at that point in time, we were having issues with Canada Trailnet, whatever you want to call it. And he actually facilitated a meeting with the president of Canada Trailnet. We spent a good half hour sitting outside the meeting assembly hall, having a discussion, and by the time we were done the discussion, we were quite at ease as to what was happening. It's locations like, opportunities like that, I guess, it's not the location, but it's the opportunity that really makes, really gives you the opportunity to go out there and learn something, discuss your issues, and provide input. The FCM advocates for us, to the federal government. And again, talking to Bill Cardston, he's the president of FCM, he's more than willing to listen to our regional concerns, and he's more than willing to try to help us. So, I would promote that any one of us that wants to go to FCM should be given the opportunity to attend. And like I say, you get out of it what you put into it. So, I would be in agreement to allow whoever wants to attend, whoever wants to participate, whoever wants to go there and interact, should have the opportunity to do so.
Yes, Counselor King.
Just to follow up with Reeve Whitstock's comments, I think that this past year, the focus that was on the Western oil and gas industry, and the push that was on the floor at FCM from Alberta representatives, just to make awareness about what's happening within our province, within our locale, and within that industry, that's really important to the province of Alberta and to us, ourselves, sitting at this council table. To me, that was just one example of an initiative that we could participate in, where we could express our own opinions about what's happening and the impact on Neale County and the province of Alberta. That's one. And then, if you go back the year previous to Halifax, for me, the information provided through the Halifax Fire Department, and just to be able to look at how they've amalgamated regionally their volunteer, part-time, paid fire service, and how they've worked to bring that forward to a more modern and more equally-trained service, that was very valuable. There were some really good ideas there that we were able to bring home from that. And so, I think that there's value in being at the table, there's value in hearing what's happening in other parts of the country, and there's value in bringing those things back here to Neale County. And so, again, I just wanted to follow up on what you had said, Reeve, about, there is things of value there that we bring home, and it's worthwhile being at that table.
Counselor McGee.
I think the struggle for us is that we are in our own nice little communities here, and we feel very accountable to the residents that are here. What I think the average voter in our county doesn't realize is how what we do impacts the province, impacts the federal policies, and vice versa. What the federal government is deciding to do, what the provincial government's trying to do, affects how we get to do business ourselves. We just finished spending a long time going through our employee benefits packages, et cetera, because of changes from Alberta government. We had an opportunity to understand some of those changes by the training we took. I find that invaluable. And so, the second factor to that is, we also have a theory or a philosophy amongst ourselves, that if one council person is willing to hear about some information, all council people are to hear about it. So, we try to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to hear all the same information. I feel as though we're going opposite to what has been a very progressive philosophy. Everyone should have the opportunity to go. If it doesn't suit your value system and how money is spent, that is up to you. But for me, I have absolutely no guilt in going, and would hope that others can see that the value of having that choice is a philosophy we have to stand behind.
Is there any other discussion? Counselor Penner.
I do hear you say it, and showing no guilt, but I do, in my situation, I find guilt in the transportation to the FCM, and I chose as a personal for my partner or husband to come along. We paid for our own flights. But that's just an individual choice, and I can justify that to my ratepayers.
Is there any other discussion? Is there a motion coming out of this? Do you want any rebuttal there? Jim? Counsel Hugo.
The councillor may opt to continue participating in and attending FCM. They may opt to cease participation with participating and attending FCM, or they may limit attendance at the FCM. FMC, FCM, okay. I'd just like counsel to provide direction to the administration on where we want to go with this. And I'd also, if I could, I'd like to see a recorded vote on this, please.
Well, we do have a policy on FCM. So if we want to keep that policy the way it is, I would say we receive this as information. If you want to change what policy we have, more than welcome to make a motion. Is anyone prepared to make a motion? Counselor McGee.
I would prefer to direct administration to bring the policy to us before we make any type of motions. That's just a comment, not a motion at this time.
So you'd like to table this until further information provided by administration? That would be your motion?
That would be my, sure, that would be my motion. That is what I mean. I would like to table this until the administration brings us more information, including a look at the bylaw.
Are we good with that, Mr. CAO? Or how would you like to see it?
So we'd be looking for, administratively, we'd be looking for counsel to defer the, basically to defer the item until we brought the more information back to you, which in this case would be the policy.
And that would be the first meeting in January?
Likely then, yes.
Okay. So is that where we're at?
Thank you for the clarity and the vocabulary.
Okay, Counselor Keever.
The totals that we've spent on going to FCM, is that, like, the spouses included in that number, or have they subtracted out and spouses paid for their own way at these things?
This is the, this is the total cost of the, to the county for council to attend. Also included in that, for, when I say council, that includes partners. The other component that's in there, roughly $1,100 a year, although it's gone up this past year, is the annual membership fee. So that's not related to the conference. That's just being a member of FCM. That's included in there as well.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Do you still want that to be a recorded motion? Counselor Hugo?
Yes, I would.
All right. Is there any more discussion to that motion? Seeing as none, I will call the question. Is the motion up on screen? Okay. For the item, yes, okay. So we are voting on the motion that Counselor McGee made to defer the agenda item until January 14th of 2020. This is going to be a recorded vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Any opposed?
No, I would like to see this human resource policy come back to council for discussion in January 14th, 2020 council meeting.
The human, no. We're voting on the motion to defer the agenda item until January 14th of 2020.
Sorry, I can't see the screen. Yes, no, to move to defer this agenda item until January 14th, 2020 meeting.
So you're-
I'm in favor, yes.
Okay, so it was carried unanimously. Okay, at this point in time, I think what we're going to do is, we're going to have the opportunity to refresh our coffee cups. So we will recess for a few. Thank you.
Okay, I will bring us back into session, ten oh two. Our next item on the agenda is eight point three, Canadian Badlands Letter of Support. Mr. Hogan.
The item that's before council right now is a request from the Canadian Badlands Association, who as council is aware is a regional tourism group that raises awareness and encourages people to come visit our, our area as part of, part of economic development. And they're looking for their member municipalities to provide letters of support to the provincial government to ensure that they continue to receive the, receive resources or the ability to function, as much of their, that is reliant on, on provincial, provincial programs. And administration is recommending that, that council provide a letter of support as per the request.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Are there any questions? What are council's wishes? Consulor McGee.
I would first just like to make the comment before I make my motion that I think this is a strongly, I strongly believe that this group is doing a great job to create a better economy in our area. And to me, diversification in our province is very needed at this time. So for that reason, I would like to recommend the motion that council provide, I would like to make the motion as recommended, that council provide a letter of support to the Canadian Badlands Limited organization as they lobby the government for continued funding.
Thank you, Consulor McGee. Motion's been made to provide a letter of support to Canadian Badlands. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's done, I will call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. We will move on to eight point four, intermunicipal, okay, ICF's Red Deer County. Mr. Hogan.
So the intermunicipal collaboration framework is a, is a program that the provincial government put into place a while ago. It's mandatory for municipalities that share borders to enter into these discussions and ultimately by, at the time, by bylaw to adopt a, an ICF, although with the recent changes, it can be by bylaw or resolution. We're already into the process, so we're recommending that we just finish it off as we, as we started. The recommendations that council give first reading to bylaw eighteen oh nine, that being a bylaw for the adoption of the intermunicipal collaboration framework with Red Deer County. So this is one of the twelve that we're required to do. And we're actually asking council to consider all three readings today, which of course will require permission for, for third. And with that, the, the ICF agreement itself is fairly, fairly high level and fairly broad. There's not a lot of partnerships or shared services or anything that we do with Red Deer County. Of course, this was a process that we worked out with Red Deer County, so they'll be adopting a, the same document on, on their end. And the, the recommendation in front of you is to go forward with that, with that process.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. What are council's wishes? Consulor Penner.
I'd make that motion that council give first reading of bylaw eighteen oh nine, that being the bylaw for the adoption of the intermunicipal collaboration framework with Red Deer County.
Okay, motion's been made for first reading to bylaw eighteen zero nine. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's done, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that was carried unanimously. Consulor Christie.
I'd move second reading to bylaw eighteen oh nine.
Thank you. We have, who, the second reading to bylaw eighteen oh nine. Is there any discussion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Could somebody give us permission to hold third reading?
I'd make that motion.
Consulor Keever. Consulor Keever makes the motion to hold third reading. This has to be unanimous. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Consulor King.
I'd make the motion that council give third reading to bylaw eighteen oh nine.
Thank you. Motion to hold third reading. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Woo-hoo, got one done.
I didn't have champagne.
I got the glasses. Okay, we will now move on to eight point five, community grants to nonprofit organizations. And this is again, Mr. Hogan.
The, this item that, that is before you is regarding the community grants to nonprofits. So this item, like several items following it, are related to policy review within the realm of grants that council gives out on a yearly basis and at other times. And this stems from the discussion that we had with you at, over the course of a couple of committee of the halls and recommended changes being made to the policies. So the summary of those changes is a cleanup of the policy statement, clarifying that if the application does not meet eligibility, that it won't make it to the council agenda for, for consideration. So that means administratively, if the, if the application doesn't meet all of the requirements, it's done at that, it's done at that point. The no funding under provincial federal organizations such as healthcare libraries, et cetera, so again, just providing some clarity to what will be considered and what won't. And administration has also added religious organizations, however, will consider organizations with religious affiliations that are seeking funding for non-denominational initiatives that are open to the community at large. So if something, if a religious group wanted to make an application for something that was, say, specific to their congregation, that would be no. If it was something they were doing that was a community event and it just happened to be, being hosted or put on by that religious organization, that would fall under eligibility for, for the community grant. So it's a little bit of clarity there. Matching funds required following the lottery funds guidelines for volunteer work. So again, the province has a system through which they recognize volunteer labor. We're saying that our policy would recognize that same system. We're not gonna, we're not creating something else. Correct. Minimum project funding limited to two hundred and fifty dollars, not mandatory to present to council, but could if they wanted to. Council approve applications at the committee of the whole meeting, recommendations come to council. So again, that's relatively current practice. Application must be signed by two members of the executive committee. Extensions to the project program need to be approved by the CIO with the decision being communicated to council. So you've seen one of those come through recently around the Huskett Hall. So again, what this change is, is that an item like that, I wouldn't necessarily need to bring back to you. I could just do that. I, you're delegating to me as a CIO to be able to grant an extension like that and just alert you to the fact that it had been done. So that's a little bit of a changes as well. So it keeps that necessarily from, from coming back to the, the council table. The, the project must be within Neale County boundaries and projects involving land or facilities must include a certificate of title, as well as some statements were added to the policy that, that we always followed but weren't originally written into the, into the policies. Again, providing that clarity, providing that, trying to make it so that when, when the applicants read that, they have a better understanding of exactly how that's going to go or what, what's required of them to have the, have the item considered by council.
Are any questions for Mike? Boy, you've done a good job explaining. Consulor McGee.
I move to approve policy number fifteen dash three, community grants to nonprofit organizations as presented.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made to approve policy fifteen dash three as presented. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda, eight point six, youth sponsorship. Mr. Hogan.
So this item, similar to the last one, is again, some policy review that was conducted recently. Council had a number of these discussions at the committee of the whole meeting and these are the, the recommendations from those discussions coming back to you. So as the, what's being recommended is that the amount of sponsorship granted to individual teams be lowered to the amount of five hundred and that the lowering the, the amount granted to individual international programs be limited to three hundred. So this does mean that applicants would receive less funding. The trade-off to that is it means we could fund more teams and applicants within the project, we're within the budget envelope. As council is aware, this year, we hit the, we essentially used up that, that budget. So there is, there were some, some entities that, you know, we didn't fund as, as maybe we would have if we had additional budget there. So in making the decision to stick to the number that was in the budget, this will allow for some additional, at least numerically, or the number of teams will allow for some additional sponsorship, even if each of them is getting a little bit less.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hogan. Are there any questions or discussion? Consulor Penner.
I would move that council approve policy fifteen dash ten, the youth sponsorship as presented.
Okay, thank you. Motion's been made to approve policy fifteen ten as presented. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We will now go to eight point seven, policy fifteen dash five, Neale County Scholarship. Mr. Hogan.
So this item, again, as part of a previous review, the changes that we're recommending be made as per the discussion that occurred earlier at committee of the whole, is changing the scholarship criteria to two scholarships selected based upon twenty percent academic achievement, sixty percent written essay, essay, and twenty percent letters of reference. To that end, the essay topic will, will change each program year. And I believe that you guys decided that the CIO would be the one figuring out the topics. So thank you for that, I guess.
You're welcome.
And, and council will approve applications at committee of the whole meeting and recommendations will come to council. So again, outlining that, that discussion will, will take place there. That's still an open forum, that, that information comes out and then council will make the formal recommendation at their meetings here.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hogan? Consulor King.
I just have one question. In the criteria, and again, this is probably my OCD kicking in, we talk about successful candidates will be selected based on the following criteria, and then we have first scholarship. I don't believe that's really required in there. We do have two scholarships and they're both based on the same criteria. Am I not correct?
Yes, that is good.
So I would suggest that's a, just an edit there, that that needs to be removed.
Yep.
Okay, what are council's wishes? Consulor Penner.
I'm looking forward to the topic next year, so I will move that council approve policy fifteen dash five, Neale County Scholarship Program.
Okay, motion's been made to approve policy fifteen five as presented, well, no, with the amendment, as amended.
With the amendment, yeah.
Alrighty, all those in favor? That is carried unanimously. We will now move on to eight point eight, policy fifteen dash seven. Mr. Hogan.
So this policy here, again, out of, like, the last one's stemming out of a regular policy review conducted by the county as part of council's ongoing review of current policies and particular policies that have not been reviewed for a period of time exceeding three years. This is being presented to you for your, for your re-adoption or your approval. They reviewed the policy with council of the June eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen committee of the whole meeting and again, at September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen committee of the whole meeting. The only change to this policy is remove the reference to a specific general ledger amount. So that's, that's an admin function in terms of where in the budget it goes. The policy still reflects that there will be money in the budget for this. We've just taken out the, the reference to the actual line item as that may change from, from time to time. So again, that's something that we take care of administratively. Your policy statement is still that there's money in there for this purpose. Your policy statement is still that there's money in there for this purpose.
Okay, what's council's wishes? Counselor Christie.
I'll make the motion to approve policy fifteen dash seven, recreation, community arts and cultural events.
Okay, motion's been made to approve policy fifteen seven as presented. Is there any discussion to that? Seeing's none, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. We will move on to eight point nine, policy fifteen dash thirteen, rural community halls. Again, Mr. Hogan.
So again, stemming out of this policy review, from the committee of the whole meeting, meetings that were, were there, the, the changes to this one that were discussed and that are being recommended are that the, an accountability form needs to be filled out yearly. So basically, that's an added measure that each, each entity that received the funding just sends us a, a quick little, little update on how they spent it, how much of it was spent, those sorts of details. And that that's, we take that information and essentially, the only caveat from that is that we wouldn't necessarily put out the future years' funding until we saw what, what that came back at.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Are there any questions? Council prepared to make a motion? Oh, Counselor King.
I'd make the motion that council approve policy fifteen dash thirteen, rural community halls as presented.
Alrighty, motion's been made to approve policy fifteen dash thirteen as presented. Is there any discussion to that motion? And seeing's none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried. We will now move on to agenda item eight point one zero, policy fifteen dash one, Mr. Hogan.
This policy as well was before you at the September seventeenth committee of the whole meeting and stemming from the council discussions at that meeting, the, the changes that were made is the only eligibility requirement is that the applicant has to receive the Alberta Century Farm Award first. So essentially, what we're doing is clarifying that we're relying on the provincial standards and if they meet the provincial standards, they meet our standards as well.
Thank you. Is there any, any discussion? Anyone prepared to make a motion? Counselor McGee.
I move to approve policy fifteen dash one, the Hundred Year Farm and Ranch Award as presented.
Thank you. The motion's been made to approve policy fifteen dash one as presented. Is there any discussion to that motion?
I just have one comment. I'm old.
Is there any thought of giving one for a hundred and twenty? We'll wait till you hit the hundred and twenty.
I'm there. One fifty to do.
That doesn't sound like there is, Mr. Keever.
No, I didn't think there should be.
Although I, I have been just informed that the province is giving out one hundred and twenty-five year awards.
Oh, there you go.
Well, you made it to a hundred. What the heck? All right. Any more discussion to agenda item eight point one zero? If not, I'll call the question. Oh, did we have a motion? Yes, we did.
Yeah.
Old timers. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. We will now move on to the amended agenda, this eight point one zero, or eight point one one, Drumheller Solid Waste, Mr. Hogan.
Okay, before I go into, into this one with, with council's indulgence, all the policies and stuff that we just went through, I'd like to, to acknowledge the work that, that the executive assistant Carolyn put into that. She was really the driver behind the past few items that you guys just saw and facilitating that discussion with you. So I just want to openly thank her for, for the work she put in there. I get the benefit of just being the mouthpiece at the meeting to, to go through the changes. But Carolyn drove that work, so I'd like to, to thank her. So to, to the Drumheller District Solid Waste.
Oh, just hang on a second. I got a comment to make to that one, too. Thank you very much, Carolyn. It's great that you managed to get this stuff in before lunch because if it was four o'clock, I don't know where you'd be. But thank you very much for putting all this stuff together to make, to make the CIO talk. Awesome. Okay, now we will move on to eight point one one, Drumheller Solid Wastes. Anytime you're ready.
Yep, so this item is been added to the agenda. There's, there's a bit of time sensitive, time sensitivity to this as the, the commissioner of the association, sorry, is looking for some feedback on December nineteenth, I believe it is. So this is our, our, the one meeting we had to, to be able to review this. As council's aware, there is an issue that the association has hit in terms of replacement of a number of the transfer bins. The, these are, of course, the large bins that are at the transfer sites that collect garbage, get emptied and transferred to the, to the regional landfill. There's a number of them throughout the region that are requiring repair. In the past, sorry, not repair, replacement, there's other ones that are requiring repair. The more, the more urgent set are needing full-on replacement as they've, I was gonna say, as they've come up on the end of their useful life, although the reality is many of them are, are a decade past their expected life cycle. So they've, they're looking at, at the options available to, to replace them. The, in the past, it's unfortunate that there haven't, there haven't been reserves or anything like that set up for these replacements. So it's sort of one of those instances where the bills, the bill's coming due and we need to, we need to figure out how to pay it. The, the association met and they've put forward three options and they're asking for consideration by their member municipalities of which of those options would be preferable and asking us to get that feedback back to them in time for their next budget discussions later this month. So the, the information that's been provided gives and outlines the, the differing options. So that is related to, they're really all related to some form of borrowing. So whether that's borrowing and paying back on a ten-year cycle or borrowing and paying back on a two-year cycle, it's really how aggressive the, the payback on those, on the different options wants to be. And so again, that's, that's what this, what this boils down to and we're looking for, for council's direction or what your comfort level is with the options that, that Drum Regional is proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Is there, are there any questions? According to what I see on the sheet, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have three that have failed or that, the condition is fail. One at Linden, one at Carbon and one at Three Hills. Am I correct?
Uh, no.
All right.
Just for clarification, so on this colorful sheet in the red, Carbon has two and Carbon doesn't utilize both of them. So we would, we really require seven to be replaced, but we're going to move one from Carbon to the Linden site for now. It's still in, in good shape, so that's why we'll ask, need a loan for six hundred thousand and not the seven hundred, they're roughly around a hundred thousand. So yeah, right now, we have Three Hills and Linden that needs to be replaced. The orange one is the next in line down the road here. So going forward here, we hope to put more away in reserves so that we don't have to go and take out another loan to replace the next set. And that's why the requisite has gone up a little bit. There's two different requisites here, but right now, we're dealing with the funding to pay for these six. Which way would council like to go?
Thank you for the clarification, Counselor Penner. One, I guess just a clarification on my part, when I said we're looking at three, I meant within Neale County. I did, I, I understand that there's a bunch that are outside of the county. Counselor King.
So just help me understand, Deb, please. So you're taking a ten-year loan. We're looking at a three dollar and twenty-four cent per capita requisition for the next ten years? Okay, and what's the plan for the other ones that are coming up? Will that be another loan and requisition or are they, how are they planning to fund those?
So the ones in orange on your spreadsheet, those four, we're hoping that, excuse me, we won't have to take a loan out. We have upped the requisition for the yearly requisition, which is on the back sheet on your agenda. It is up to the forty-one thirty-eight and that will put away seventy-five thousand a year in the reserves for replacements. So we're hoping that, that some of the oranges will last a little longer than they, it's projected here, if you take the spreadsheet and the dates, how old they are. Because if they're well looked after, they'll last longer. So any of those in orange, we're hoping, because we've upped the requisite this year to put more money into reserves. In the past, we've only put fifty thousand, or not for very many years, but just for a couple of years. Now we want to put seventy-five thousand away, which hopefully in however many years, there'll be enough in the reserves to cover the cost of those. Does that make sense, sorry?
Yeah, it does. It's really unfortunate that the colors, your orange is like the brown?
Sorry, it's the orange one.
Okay, bronze. Okay, not even, not even gonna go to bronze. Okay, I get it.
So if I read this right, then, just again, clarification, we're looking at two hundred and six, two hundred and seven thousand as the regular requisition and then we're adding additional sixteen thousand, two hundred and three dollars and change on top of that. And that sixteen thousand will be paid out for the next ten years in addition to the regular requisition.
The age number in front of each one of these, Deb, doesn't seem to work. So is it, like where Troshe is one, that it's only a year old, the transfer there?
That's correct. And as a commission, this slipped by. Troshe has got two relatively new ones, but we didn't realize we were going to be in such bad shape. We just, as a commit, we didn't have the vision, which we should have, and they should not have got two brand-new ones. We should have spread that around a bit because those two are gonna come up for renewal in twenty-five, thirty years, which is a shame. We would like to take one out of Troshe and put it somewhere else and put a, a used one in Troshe so that they're two different. But it, we're still looking into that, it's just how much is it going to cost us to shift them around? While the truck is here, it, it may not cost a lot, but if it is, we're leaving it alone for now. But that was our, as a commission, that was our mistake, that we did not catch that. Because those two are in bad shape, really bad shape.
Are there any other questions?
Just, just to let you know a little bit more, too, like the maintenance in the past was not equal across the whole commission. Now we have new protocols and that and at any time, our manager of the landfill site can ask for those reports on the maintenance. There'll be spot checks, things like that. Some of these are in bad shape because way back when, there was not attendance at the sites and there was fires in them. So that jeopardized the strength of the metal and a few things like that. So, and like Linden's is quite old, but it had a refurbish here a few years ago. So every bin is different, but going forward here, we have a protocol which our operations has and hopefully, we're better managed and we've got, we're looking to the future and putting money away and stuff like that.
So the part that's failing is ultimately the bin itself from corrosion and damage from fire?
That's correct. It's the metal, big metal sheets.
Okay, and has anybody looked into just redoing the bottoms?
Yes, we have. And we are better off to do this, to replace them and then stay on top of it. We've actually looked in putting liners in them and a few different options. It's unfortunate that Hell has a monopoly on this, on these bins, but they've been very good to work for, or work with, I should say, here. And that's another thing, too, we may, we've put it out to them to give us a quote on, they check every site to, to make sure the upkeep is kept up and that. But that's an extra expense to each of the little municipalities and I don't think any of us can really afford that, especially the smaller ones, and we already have staff that can look after our sites. So I, I don't think we'll go that way. But we've put, asked them for a proposal to check every site for us.
Okay, thank you. I guess a supplemental, there is only one company that provides these transtors. They have a monopoly on it.
That's correct. So you might ask, why are we staying with them? We have looked at some other options, like east of here, they just have built into the side of a hill, the garbage is all dumped on top, the garbage truck has a bobcat on it, comes to, pushes the garbage into the hole, falls into the truck and away they go. It's just the cost of setting that up would be a lot more than what we're already dealing with. And our truckers and that are happy with the way it's done. It's so much tidier, the garbage isn't blowing out of the fence, it's all inside the trans door.
And I would agree with that. Far less chance of a bobcat ending up in the dumpster. Okay, what's, Counselor Penner? I see you've got your finger on the button.
So today here, we're just enlightening you on that the requisite has gone up. As a board, we said for our yearly requisite, that has gone up. But today here, we would like to hear what, what's our opinion on the loan? Which way do yous want to go? Do we want to take the loan out or do we want to pay it all lump sum, one as a county? That's the discussion here.
Is there any sort of a recommendation from our member on the Drumheller Solid Waste Or any sort of what the, what the commission would like to see happen? Preference, I guess, is the word I was looking for.
Because a lot of the municipalities don't have the money, it'll definitely be one or two, but totally up to us.
Option, just for clarification, Deb, then option three would be a two-year requisition at that fourteen forty-five?
That's correct, a lot, a lot, larger sum of money.
Okay, so we're basically looking at a hundred and sixty-two thousand and change over ten years, or we're looking at a hundred and forty-five thousand approximately in two years. And the way I look at our budget as we have it this year to take seventy-two thousand dollars and add it to our budget, I'm not sure, sixteen thousand we could do, I'm not sure about seventy-two. It's less money over time, but it's more money right now.
I was just wondering if Bill would like to add anything to this at all?
Just to re, I guess, the only thing I would add is option two, even though it's more costly, would provide more flexibility to the commission to deal with future needs and keep the requisition sort of, you know, there's initial hit, but it would provide the commission more flexibility to either moderate that down in future years or to redeploy it to reserve contributions or other needs the commission may have. Other than that, don't have anything further to offer.
Counselor King.
Just as another follow-up, Deb, your sense of, you know, like, I agree with Bill that if we got it out of the way, it's out of the way, but the smaller communities, if they had to pay over two years, what's your sense of the capability of them being able to do that?
Quite a few of them won't be able to, I don't feel, but this, they're finding this tough as it is, but it has to be done. They did meet, all SCIOs and that did meet and they have, they do know about this and talked about it and so I'm hoping they have some good discussions before our next meeting.
Just some more follow-up.
Counselor King, sorry.
So my sense is, is that even if we opted for option three, the likelihood of that actually getting through that actually getting through Drumheller Solid Waste is pretty small.
So I guess I have a question. They'll tabulate the results of our, what we would like to do with all the others, and come to a consensus that way?
That's correct. And one thing to remember, on the basic requisite, we are all paying, but on this transstore requisite, this loan, the town of Drumhella, Delia, and Morin are not participating, because they do not have transtors.
And you have to have something back by the 19th of December, okay? So this is our chance to provide input.
And the reason we say that is, the property insurance is covered by the county, and the liability is by the commission, and, and some of these transtors are not safe. They'll, we'll be closing the gate and bringing in some of the big 30-yard
Containers.
Containers here soon. So we need to, we need to jump on these, and they can be replaced right away. We've been working with Halle, Hallwall, I should say, and they know about it, and they will be bringing them in very quickly here, and taking the rest away.
And that cost has been calculated into the bins to bring, bring in the new one, haul away the old one?
That's correct. And you might have a question about the recycling of the metal. Yes, we could do it that way, but it'll cost us more, whereas this way, they take it, they recycle it, they've kept the price down for us.
I guess, although I think we're probably not going to win this one, I guess I would say that we move to support, based on the information that Bill provided us, that perhaps we recommend that we go with option three. I know it takes, it's a painful approach. My suspicion is it probably won't get through the commission necessarily, but, am I understanding you correct, that we should maybe take the hit up front, Bill? Was I wrong in interpreting what you said?
Through the reef, I guess, there's two points to it. You know, for the county, that it's manageable, but again, for the smaller communities, it would create some significant pain on their part. So it's a balancing act, in terms of, you know, I'd really like to defer back to the commission, it has more information than I do, in terms of the overall strategy to deal with the replacements on a go-forward basis. So the only point of option three was to provide some flexibility, if we wish to move in that direction, but it may not be palatable for all the members to move that quickly in that direction.
Well, in that case, then, I think that we probably should recognize maybe the limitations of some of the members, and maybe we should get onside.
But just, just to, sorry, just step in.
I was looking for your direction, so.
Sure. And I don't fully know until we go back to this meeting how they're feeling. If we want to put through option, we would like, we would prefer option three and deal with it, that will be my first recommendation to them. And then, once we have the feel for it, then we can go to the other. So it's up to you guys here. If we feel that we would like option three, that's what I will bring to the board.
Okay, then I guess I'd be looking for a sense of what's, what's the feeling around the table? What are the other counselors thinking?
I guess my thought is they're working on a reserve to move forward from here, that option one would give the others, municipalities, a chance to participate, that they can afford, and the reserves would move in to be more, more economical in three to five years.
If, if you go with option one or two, whatever, none of this money will go to reserves. It's all to pay the loan. So the only reserves are being taken out is your basic yearly requisite, that's always, or hasn't always been there, but we pay that, we pay it twice a year, actually.
But the vision of the commission now is to up the, up the requisition, so you do have a reserve.
Where everybody has to be on the same page, I guess, I'm thinking then that we should be on number one, option one, just to make sure that, you know, I mean, everybody is on the same page, because you can't do, one jurisdiction can't do option one, and another one do three, or anything else. So one is probably going to be the perfect choice.
Right, it will, it will be a consensus. Everyone will all be on the same.
I think, though, what we have to look at is ideally, what choice would we like to have? What would our vote be ideally? And then instruct a representative what we could live with. So I don't think we need to vote what's ideal for other people, we need to vote what's ideal for us.
Okay, then I would go back to my original question, and take it back to Bill. From the point of view, if I could, through the reef, ask the question, from the point of view of Neale County, if you were making a recommendation to us as council today, would you recommend that we go with option three, in recognition that, yes, we can handle it? And then, the direction, if we said that's what would be our preference, we could then give direction to our representative, Counselor Penner, to say if the consensus is opposite of that, then we are willing to participate. So, again, looking for some direction from you, through the reef.
Through the reef, there is another option I would put out back to the commission, is that the county just pay up its share upfront, and make the one-time payment, and not incur the cost of borrowing, and just make the cash contribution for our share of the acquisition. That would allow the other members to proceed with a 10-year borrowing strategy, or whatever strategy each of the partners felt comfortable to. So I think that option should be there. If you want to come to the front door with the cash, then you're not hit with the requisition.
I had the very thought, that very thought on my mind as well. I think we have done a great job in history, or I should say, the prior council, of making sure we're not in a loan situation, and, and that's why I'm hesitating to make a choice. So I prefer this option of upfront.
So let me just get this straight. Mr. McKinnon, you're talking, make a one-year lump sum payment, and be done? And that would amount to 144,500 and some dollars? Am I correct on my math?
My assumption would be that there has to be some cost of borrowing, even in the two-year. So it might be, that would probably be the maximum amount. Potentially, it would be slightly less than that. And then I guess the other question that was yet unanswered is whether the commission would actually even, or the Management Association would even consider allowing that to happen. I like it, but then it's off our plate, right?
Well, I'm looking at option three here, and it states that it's a two-year interest-free loan from Hallwall. I don't know.
They have said that to us, they, for the two years, and the town will work through the town of Drumhella, and I don't fully understand how that works. Like, they could work through us, too, but the town of Drumhella, they have a little bit of a partnership with them, that they will, can they get a better interest rate or something through the government? I forget what it's, like.
AFC.
Okay, yeah.
Alberta Capital Finance. Or ACF, Alberta Capital Finance.
Authority, yeah. So if I, if I, if I may, Mr. Reeve, one of the things, you know, over the course of the discussion, I think the, the recommendation from administration is that the, as a group here, we're not going to be able to make the decision for the commission, if they're looking for our input. There's nothing stopping us from sending back a, an order of options. At the end of the day, we can make any of them, we're one, we're fortunate in that we can make any of them work. So it's really just what our preference is, right? And as Bill said, if they're, you know, if that's our first, our first preference, which I think it is, is to say, you know what, we'd just like to pay it upfront, and not, not be part of the borrowing. If you'll allow that, that's our preferred option, and what you figure out for the rest is what you figure out for the rest. The, you know, if, if that is a no-go, then our next would be, say, option three, is I think what I'm hearing. And then if not that, then, then option one. So there is, you know, I think that's where, where you land on, is you send back and say, you know, we can make any work, but this is what we'd like to see in this order. And then the rest of it is the discussion of the commission on the, on the 19th.
I'd like to move to support the options, as Mike just outlined, with first payout, then option three, then option one, being clear that we are willing to work with the commission, as it works best for them.
We'll wait for that motion to come up on screen. Open the door. Actually, not that bad this morning.
Can we just say one lump sum payment? Because I, I would argue the math on that 104,520. Because if you take 600,000 and divide by the 2764, and then multiply by ours, it comes to 144,509. So I think if we just say one lump sum payment.
Because their math might be different than our math. I just took the 1445, times 5,001, times two.
Yeah, but actually, if you take the 600 that they're borrowing, and divide by the total population, it comes to actually less than that.
Hmm.
As you say, the population is 20,764. I'm sure in the end, they'll invoice us for whatever the amount.
So do we have the motion on screen, the way you would like to see it, Deputy Reeve McGee?
Yes, thank you.
Just, I'm just wanting for clarification, if it should say for the emergent transstore replacement. It's not for all of them, it's just for these six emergents.
I'd like that revision, thank you, Debbie.
Any input from staff? Mr. Hogan?
Through you, Mr. Reeve, I think that it's, the, the recommendation is, is reflective as to the motion council made.
Okay, is there any more? Okay, so that is your motion, Deputy Reeve McGee?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, is there any discussion to that motion, before I call the question?
I guess in light of the fact that we just passed an interim budget, we could build this into when we finalize it after the New Year, so we're, we're good, so.
We can, what, what'll end up happening is, we still, we still have to wait until the, the association comes back with, this is how we've decided to do that. And then when they come back, we can take a look at the options. So if they, if they go with, say, option three or one, we build that into the budget, and we come back to you and suggest how we're going to finance that, whether that's through a tax increase, or whether that's through, say, contingency reserve, or some mechanism like that. If it's option one, we would look at the same things, is that, that may be something we'd come back to you with a recommendation that we funded from, we'd have to take a look at the reserves, whether it's contingency, or if we have an environmental reserve, something along those lines. Because that would require a formal motion from council to, to do.
Like, in my mind, if I was the association, and we could borrow 450,000 as opposed to 600,000, and whether we finance it over 10 years or not, for everybody else in that association, it's going to cost them, if it's a 10-year borrowing program, will cost them less in terms of interest. So why wouldn't they take the money upfront and run? Just pay that as a down payment, and then go from there? But you never know, when you get into a committee room with a bunch of people, not everybody's going to see that the same way, so. To me, if they would, if they would go that route, I think everybody benefits long run.
Is there any more discussion while we're discussing? Seeing is none. We have a motion before us. If everybody wants to read that motion, and then I will call the question.
Sorry, Carolyn, you see the typo there, transfers, needs to be, do you have a transstore?
They're called transfers.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, everybody's had the opportunity to read it, I will call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, Counselor Penner, and good luck. Seeing if we can make this process push. Okay, we do not have any disposition of delegate or public hearing business, so we will move on to Agenda Item 10, Council and Committee Reports. They have been pre-circulated. Are there any questions? Any comments? Counselor McGee?
I'd be interested to know if any updates came out of the gathering or conference that Shelley attended for FCSS.
Are you referring to the provincial conference?
Yes.
So basically, the update at the provincial conference was that the minister stood up and said that the FCSS funding for this current year was said that the FCSS funding for this current year was solid, and there would be no change. She then went on to say that they're in the process of developing, actually, not her, but Ken Dropko said they were in the process of developing a three-year contract for FCSS. So we would get a contract that would specify, we have funding for the next three years. They would tell us solid funding for this year, and estimated funding, but not guaranteed for the next two years. So the red tape reduction is, you only get one contract for three years. The unknown is, what happens with funding year two, year three? We were told very clearly that if we tried to replace the Prairie Link, Parent Link program, or our community resource workers, or the Community Builder Initiative, through some kind of backdoor programming through FCSS, that that would be frowned on heavily, and that we were not to use FCSS funding to recreate those programs. So they were, they're adamant that those programs are done, they're cooked, they're finished, they're off the plate, and that any programming that's going to sort of replace that has to come through this new expression of interest process, and you would have to reapply for new funding, and then recreate funding, new programs based on the funding received. So that's as much of an update as I can give you.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Ken.
Are there any other questions, concerns, comments? With our council and committee reports? If not, is someone prepared to make a motion to receive for information? Counselor Penner?
I shall move that we receive council committee reports as presented.
Okay, motion's been made to receive the reports as presented. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. We will now go on to Agenda Item 11, Council Follow-Up Action List. It's been pre-circulated. Any questions, comments, accolades? Yes, Mr. Hogan?
The, through you, Mr. Reeve, just an update on a couple of those items. The, the November 26 item, so Motion 50319 on Page 2, that the Director of Administration to draft a letter to the province and our local MLA regarding concerns regarding the termination of programs to Children's Services Program. That letter was signed off this morning, so it'll go out today. So for all intents and purposes, that item's complete as well. So we'll verbally update that, and it'll, it'll disappear. And then the other update is Motion 33519 on the first page, regarding the policy for optional use of personal cell phones. That one, of course, you took care of that one with the adoption of the, the human resources policy today. So that one is, was actually completed this morning as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. What's council's wishes? Counselor McGee?
I move to receive the December 10, 2019 council follow-up action list as presented for information.
Thank you. Motion's been made to accept for information. All those in favor? That is carried unanimously. And that, I do believe, brings us to the end of our open council session. Looking for a motion to go into closed session to deal with intergovernmental affairs, and is it's... Section 12? Other hand, 21. That's what I thought. There we go, now I got it, 21. Great, thank you. Counselor Christie, so moved. Okay, Counselor Christie has made the motion to go into closed session. All those in favor? And that is carried, and we will wait for the...
Okay, are we back on screen? Possibly, maybe? Okay, oh, we have a motion made at eleven thirty five to bring us back into regular counsel. All those in favor? That is carried and eleven thirty six, I will adjourn the meeting of December the tenth.